Is there any, is it anywhere in the office? You know, not?
I want to mention somebody. Somebody playing a game.
Speed humps, I used to have them in college.
Hey, Melissa, are you ready for the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Chair.
My pleasure.
Okay. I don't know where it could have gone.
So we haven't figured maybe it's all of this.
Welcome to the June 17th council meeting. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, but before we say it, I'd like to give a moment of silence to one of our retired officers who was with Morrisville Borough for 43 years. He started here in 1981, and he just retired in March of 2024. So we want to wish his, want to give his family our deepest condolences, and it's Officer Ross Delesio. So if everyone would stand in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Virginia.
President.
Captain Frank Zingler.
Present.
President.
Melissa Johnson.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Scott Holbert on behalf of Leggeran Associates.
Yeah, so we have a statement from our Borough Manager, Jim Dillon.
Earlier today, it was brought to my attention that the agenda did not get posted on the Borough's website as required by the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. Upon notification, the agenda was uploaded immediately. Unfortunately, a member of the Borough staff was out on medical leave, and the check to see if the agenda was properly uploaded fell through the cracks. There was no intention of the Borough or this council to hide items on the agenda. This was a clerical administrative error. After discussion with council, we decided to still hold the meeting as there may be people in attendance who are here for specific items on the agenda. We will hold an additional vote at our next Borough Council meeting to reaffirm all the votes made here this evening to ensure we are in full compliance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. We, I apologize for this oversight, but in the interest of respect to all, we felt this was the best way to accommodate people's schedules rather than cancel tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. I hope everyone is okay with that. We're going to make our most effort not to have that happen again. The Borough's 2025 road paving project, it has been underway. There, I have been seeing on Facebook that there are some complaints. It's a little mind boggling, given that all the roads in Morrisville are going to be paved, and I don't understand why people would be upset, but I know that the signs are up and... Jacob, do you want to like speak why some of the holdup is? I know the weather has been a holdup, and I know that they have been repairing some things while they're doing the paving and the milling.
Yeah, so I have an update as far as for today. All roads have been milled so far, and so what happens in between, so they mill an inch and a half of the road first, and then there is base repair that happens in between that and final paving. So this base repair identifies if there's any soft spots, any weak spots in the subbase of the pavement section. So they address those, and it takes some time to get through that, but yes, like Helen mentioned, at the beginning there, the first two weeks, we had a lot of rain, so we had a lot of pausing, and they can only, they can't pave in the rain, they can mill in the rain, but not pave. So they did their best in what they could, so that was milling. But again, as far as, as of today, all roads have been milled, and then as far as paving, all of those below Bridge Street have been paved. So then we're working up through Ward Two right now in more residential area with those paving, and then continue on. Base repair for those roads should take another two to three days, and then after that, we'll be smooth sanding with paving, knocking wood. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody on council have any questions about that?
Yes, I do. Excuse me. People have asked me if there's a list of every street that's going to be worked on, and I'm sure that you put that together. Is that something I can get so I can?
It's on, it's on the website.
Is it on the website?
It's on the Borough website.
Okay, I'll direct people to that.
There's, yeah, there's a list and a map on the website.
I'm sure there was, I'm just, I just wanted to direct people, thank you.
That it is only the current paving list? I mean, for next year, we'll do the same thing, but.
Additionally, too, with, with the rain, when the rain is setting it back a little bit, it's, it's not just rain from two or three days ago, it could have been rain in April because the company is, gets set back, and so that, that's causing some of the, some of the delay, too.
Yeah, JDM did have a, a day delay on their other project, which paused moving their paving crew over here. Again, they had their milling crew here the whole time, but yeah, paused for paving on their end, which scheduling, but we hold them to that. We have sections in the contract if we need to enforce, we can, but at this time, they haven't gone over any time constraints, so.
And it's, and some of the other complaints, they wanted to do one street at a time, but it's more cost beneficial to mill a lot of streets, go back and pave a lot of streets, correct?
The way that JDM is working, they have three crews. They have the milling crew that comes in one day, then they have a, a second crew that does the base, just the base repair, and then they have a third crew that will do just the paving. So they're, they're coordinating their own crews, make, working their way through. But that's the, yeah, that's kind of holdup, that pauses immediately paving after milling.
How much, how much base repair was there, like compared to say what was budgeted, for lack of a better phrase, because I know the one corner had to have some work done.
Yeah, so we, I believe in the contract, I don't have it on top of my head right now, somewhere around 3,000 square yards of base repair in the contract. And as far as what's been completed in the first ward, we were only up to about 600 square yards of that. There are some roads, again, we put a, the estimate that we put in the, in the bid is just an estimate based on our evaluation of the road above. We never, don't know what happens when we mill it up.
When I mean budgeted, I mean budgeted from just strictly a, a time perspective, like getting set back.
Again, we have, it all depends on how big of the areas.
Question they would probably have to answer, right?
Yeah, and it all depends on the size of the areas that we identify from the proof rolls. Most of them have been generally sized, normal, average sized areas, and they, like, again, today they sped through and they got, I think, three roads done with base repair, which were pretty decent quantities. So they are keeping up and moving along as fast as they can, but yeah.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you. A great announcement, 70 East Bridge Street used to be a, a smoke shop, and a couple years ago, right, it was a couple years ago, they, somebody bought it and they fought to the Borough to open another smoke shop, and we were trying to use the ordinance that we had voted upon.
Three years ago.
Yeah, three years ago, to, to stop that smoke shop. Well, the good news is that smoke shop has been closed now, and it's now called Fish Lane, and they are a bait and tackle shop, and they can now, because they have switched what their business is, they can no longer be a smoke shop. So one down, many, many, many to go. So that's actually great news. But I was talking to the owner there, and one of the things that they said is that they're looking for donations of old rods and reels because they're going to do something with the kids. So I think they want to have some kind of fishing contest with the kids. So if anybody out there has some old rods and reels, if you wanted to donate them, that's 76, 70 East Bridge Street. And one of the other things that they had mentioned to me is that they sell frozen bunker, which I don't know what that is, but they said that it's a wanted thing and that people stop from all over in order to buy it. So I hope that they continue to be successful. Some bad news, Summer Seat Partnership update. Last month, we had a, read a letter that had stated that Summer Seat was going to be in partnership with the Borough, and then the next day, we got an email which said that was not Summer Seat's intention, and they do not want to be in partnership with the Borough. So we're going to take back, we're not going to be in partnership with Summer Seat. Next is 200 North Pennsylvania Avenue, the YMCA land development. I think they're here for the presentation.
Yes, they're, is this on? Can everyone hear me? I can, normally I can hear myself, now I can. They're represented by attorney Carrie Nace, who's here today, and I believe their engineer is here with them as well. I'll turn it over to them to give their presentation of their land development project right up the road here at 200 North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Carrie Nace. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild, here this evening on behalf of the owner and applicant, River Crossing Young Men's Christian Association. Before I get started, if I may, I do have a hand, a few handouts. If I may approach council. So as many of you are familiar, I'm sure, with 200 North Pennsylvania Avenue, this property is improved with an existing building, which was constructed back in the 1950s, previously used for a school, and has been operating as a YMCA childcare facility for over 32 years. Last year, the YMCA acquired the property and is now looking to upgrade the building that's currently located there, as well as improve some of the internal circulation. So the building actually has not been improved or upgraded since it was initially constructed, and one of the primary goals of the improvements that are being proposed is to bring the building into ADA compliance. The, the building addition that we are seeking is not intended to increase enrollment, but better serve the current enrollment at this location. The property and the use is a non-conforming use. We did receive special exception approval from the zoning hearing board to expand the use, as well as to allow a portion of it to be considered a community center, which we'll get into a little bit more detail. What I handed out here is just some exhibits here to better familiarize yourself with what's being proposed, and the first is just an aerial showing the location of the property, as you're familiar with that. The second item is a rendered site plan, which Mr. Witters will go through in a few minutes. And then the third item is really just the, some photographs of the existing conditions. And what you'll see is currently the entrance into the building, it's the first photo here on the top left, the entrance into the building is up two flights of steps. And so as I indicated to you, one of the primary purposes is we're constructing in addition to the rear of the building, which will now be considered the main entrance and will be ADA accessible, as well as have an elevator to get up to the second floor. And what you'll see in the second photograph, which we'll go through, is right now, there is an outdoor play area that is immediately adjacent to the building that has the fence that goes around it. That area is what we're considering the second building addition, and really what we're doing is using that same area that's shown as fenced in area there, but enclosing it to provide an indoor play space. The fourth attachment are renderings of what the proposed building will look like after, I shouldn't say building, but the proposed additions will look like, as well as an upgrade to the building once the improvements are completed. And then lastly, are just floor plans for your reference, just showing what the new layout will be interior. What I'd like to do in a few minutes, I will have Matt go through the site plan and explain in more detail the improvements that are being proposed. After we received the special exception approval, we did prepare preliminary final land development plans, which are before you this evening. We received a review letter from the Borough Engineer. Previously, we met with the Planning Commission, we worked through the comments that were in that letter, submitted revised plans. We received a new letter from your Borough Engineer. All the items in there are, will comply. We're certainly happy to go through each of the items if you'd like us to, and there are numerous waivers as well that we are requesting, which the Planning Commission also supported recommendation on. If you'd like, we can certainly walk through those as well. So what I'd like to do is have Matt go through the site plan, and then we'll open it up to any questions that you may have, and if you'd like to go through the waiver list or the review letter, we're certainly prepared to do that.
Hold on a second, let me give you the...
Good evening. This is my good side, anyway. Thank you. All right, this is a copy of the existing conditions plan, the way the site currently stands, with the building as you know it today out front, with frontage along Pennsylvania Avenue at the bottom, and then we do have an entrance off of East Palmer Street in the back. The outdoor play area that Carrie referred to would be designated here on the right-hand side. That's sort of an elevated play area, it's asphalt covered, and then there's some canopies, which are signified by the blue areas here. There is an entrance in the front, that's the main entrance, the drop-off area now, as Carrie mentioned, and the picture shows really well, there's a double set of stairs that you have to get up to get into that entrance. There's also an exit in the back that serves, I think, for emergency purposes right now that leads out to the rear parking lot. That's also accessible only by stairs. So the intent here is to add those two building additions, one to enclose this outdoor play area to kind of create a four-season space that they can use year-round. And then more importantly is, is the two-story addition on the rear of the building that will allow extra space for stairwell and an elevator, internal elevator, to get to and from the first and second floors. There's also some closet space, as you'll see in the footprint, and some, I think, an office as well in that space. Same layout. As you can see, not much changing with the overall site, same building, existing building, and then the two additions on the rear and the right-hand side of the, of the existing building. One of the other major changes that we worked with the Borough Engineer on, and, and the Y, was to change this officially to a one-way in and one-way out only. So it'll be one-way in from East Palmer and one-way out to East, or I'm sorry, to North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Isn't it that way now?
Theoretically, it's supposed to be, but it's not, there aren't, there's no signage except for, there's a do not enter sign out front right now.
One-way sign out front.
Right, and a one-way sign out front, but we're going to add additional signage, we're going to add pavement markings to help underline that and reinforce that, that concept. And certainly, we're trying to create a safer space with this building addition in the back for drop-off. The whole point with putting the rear part, or putting the, the main entrance in the back is so that we create a little bit more of a convenient and safer space for the parents to pull into parking spaces along the back of the property, or I'm sorry, the back of the building now, do a, kind of a temporary unload with the children. They're there real quick, it's kind of a revolving door type of a, a setup right now, and it will be continued that way, and then they're out. So they'll, they'll enter from East Palmer, come in over a, actually a speed hump that we put in to try to help with some of the speed cutting through that parking lot. There's also a new crosswalk we're adding, which I'll get into in a minute, and then they'll have access to any one of the remaining parking spaces that are in the back, drop the kids off, and then they can pull out to North Pennsylvania Avenue out the front. Again, reinforce it with all the two-way, one-way pavement markings, as I mentioned, the crosswalk. There are two existing play areas. One is for the older tot, which is right here, this lighter pink area. There was an existing one back here for the younger tots, the less than two-years-old kids, that they had to walk through the parking lot to get to. So the intent was to extend a concrete sidewalk out as far as we possibly could to create a crosswalk out here, to create a little bit more of a pedestrian-friendly and safer environment for the teachers and the children to escort those, or I'm sorry, the teachers to escort those children out to the older tot lot. And then one of the things the Y wanted to accomplish with this change was to move the younger tot lot closer to the building. So we're taking that same tot lot, same square footage and everything, and moving it up front here, where we had some asphalt that we're going to remove, do a little bit of regrading in that area, put up a new fence around it, a new canopy. That area is sort of a temporary play area, we'll say, it's got like the plastic little tykes type play equipment and things like that. The older tot lot has a little bit more of a permanent feel to it, some sway, there's swings, but some slides and jungle gym type stuff there, it's going to remain or get upgraded as part of this. We are going to add a dumpster enclosure, the dumpsters just hang out in the parking lot right now, so we're going to try to screen those as well as part of this. And with the changes, we're looking at an overall reduction in impervious cover by about 6,400 square feet, which in the grand scheme of things is, is a decent amount for this lot. One of the things that we had to do, or one of the items that we had to do a little due diligence on, is the fact that we back up to Delaware Canal State Parks. We had to go talk to DCNR last year, and talk to them for about 18 months, and get their kind of blessing on this layout, because we knew stormwater management was going to be an issue with them. They're happy with the improvements, they're happy with the change and the reduction to the impervious cover, and that's really how we managed and satisfied, or we're actually exempt from stormwater management, the Borough's stormwater management regulations, because we're reducing the impervious cover out there. So they've seen this, I have an email that they've blessed this plan. We actually went back and forth on property line boundaries and things like that, because there were some discrepancies, made some changes to the plan, so state's happy with what we're doing back here as well. We are going to add, the last thing I'll point out is we're going to add, as part of the upgrades, to some of the fencing in the back, we're going to add a vehicular gate that'll be opened in the morning with a remote by the first person that steps foot, staff-wise, on the, the site, remain open during the entire duration of the day for parents to just enter. They're not going to have to open the gate themselves or remote access that gate or anything else, they'll be able to freely enter the site, and then we'll close that back up in the evening. Because one of the things the Y has experienced over the last couple of years is some unwanted activity happening back in this parking lot after hours, after 6:00, 7:00 PM. So we're going to add the gate, and we're also going to improve the site lighting as well by putting in your kind of standard LED pole lights, some wall packs, we're doing some small pedestrian lights just to help light some of those spaces up. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, a neighbor was a couple years ago and had, has periodically reminded me, there is a light that you guys have back there. It might be the one in, it might be this one here in the fifth picture, the resident that lives on East Palmer.
Oh, right here, probably then. Okay.
Is that, is that East Palmer there?
This is East Palmer on the left-hand side.
Yeah, go down, not that house, not that, keep that one right there.
That one right there?
Yeah, one of your lights drives us, drives them crazy, and I don't blame them because I've seen it at night. It looks like a, like a halogen spotlight, so.
It's going to get replaced with your full cutoff, you know, dark sky compliant LED, your more modern LED light at a, at a much more, we'll say, neighbor-friendly height.
Tone down?
Yeah, much more toned down. With, with LED lights now, you can point them in any direction, we can put houseside shields on, which we absolutely have, taking all that into account. We, during the Planning Commission meeting and during the zoning hearing, we're hearing, the reason I pointed to the neighbor out front is that he approached us, and one of his concerns was the light as well, he was, didn't want a stadium behind his house, you know, and certainly we've taken that into account with our light design. I'm happy to answer any other questions while I'm standing here. Thank you.
I, I think it looks, this, this is the rear, so this is the back where the parking lot is right here. I, I really like the pictures that you have. This, this building was tired when I went to kindergarten there in 1973, so this is definitely, definitely an improvement, but it looks really nice.
Thank you.
And one, one question, the gate that's going to be locked, you're going to give the fire department access?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And is it only that gate on Palmer, not that front one on Pennsylvania, right?
Correct. Yep. Would you like us to go through the review letter? Like I said, there's minimal comments, everything in here that does.
No, I mean, I think the easier way is, Jacob, do you have any comments on the application? Any, any issues from Gilmore as you see it? You've worked out everything with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, come to the.
There's a few minor comments in our letter, but nothing that can't be addressed, minor plan changes, so nothing.
Is there any other questions or comments from council?
I guess, quick question, remove, moving the tot lot, is that what we called it? What's going to replace that?
That's a, that's a great question. I kind of laid over that. If, if you're familiar with the site, they do have some buses they park on the site now. It's for their, I believe, before-school and after-school care programs. The Y has gone through sort of a self-reflection, we'll say, on the need for those buses, I think there's five of them there now typically. We've provided, in that space, there's a, an area back there, it's kind of a darker gray on that plan with three larger parking spaces. That's going to be bus parking with the intent that those buses are, we can remove them from the site altogether, find new homes for them, because I don't know that they're actually needed, you know, moving forward with this, but they're, they're there if they're needed. And away from, the intent was to get them away from the school, away from the kids, out of the middle of the parking lot, you know, so it's a much safer vehicular and pedestrian space. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I indicated, we also had several waivers that we are requesting. Again, they were included in the review letter, but if you have any questions regarding waivers or if you'd like us to go through those, we can certainly do that as well.
No, I think we're good.
Then otherwise, if you don't have any other comments or questions, we're simply here this evening asking for your consideration in granting preliminary final plan approval.
Yes, and that's on our agenda here at action item 11D, and as we've done in the past with such applications, we've also taken the time to amend the agenda to bring that up now, if council so chooses, and that will be our recommendation as well, as it's fresh in your minds and fresh as well in the public in case they have any questions on the motion.
Jacob, nothing with the waivers, right? There's nothing out of the ordinary, nothing the Borough needs to be concerned about? Okay. All right. Is everybody okay if we vote on 11D? Okay. Call for motion to approve resolution granting preliminary final. Okay. Call for motion to approve resolution granting preliminary final land development approval to River Crossing YMCA for the land development application for 200 North Pennsylvania Avenue. Scott, would you make the motion?
I'll move.
Catherine, would you second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment first.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. How could I forget? Anything from the public? Okay, Jane.
Good evening. Jane Berger, West Maple Avenue, longtime resident, been familiar with this facility. And I wholly support the renovations and enhancements that are being proposed. It will certainly not only improve their appearance, but the, that they care for the little ones that go there. And it's a positive curb appeal as well for the Borough of Morrisville. So I hope you'll vote positively for it.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? That's it? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations. Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
And when do you think this will be done? Next week, month?
They're targeting end of next year.
Oh, great. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a presentation by Sam Davis, who is also known as George Washington, to talk about Summer Seat.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here tonight. Morrisville is very, very important to all of us.
Oh, just a second. Okay, all right. Thank you, Melissa. All right, go ahead.
We, right now, are trying to raise some money for a plaque that is, well, it's probably the most important event that ever happened to our country. The Washington Rochambeau March to Yorktown changed everything. And if that did not happen, we would not be sitting here now as we are. During that time, the French were helping us tremendously. Rochambeau was up in Rhode Island, and I, as General Washington, was down in New Jersey. And I wanted to attack New York. And the reason why I wanted to attack New York is because in 1776, we lost all the battles of New York. It was horrible. So that was burning in my gut. I wanted to get the revenge of the losses. And I was waiting for Rochambeau to come from Rhode Island, and he finally arrived in New Jersey. He looked at me and he said, yes, I think we should attack New York. And he tried to smooth it over with me and tried to make me think that he was on my side, but he was not. He had another plan. And finally, he gave me the idea of what he was all about. He wanted to go to Yorktown, because at that time, General de Grasse, or I'm sorry, Admiral de Grasse, had Cornwallis surrounded on the water, because he had the French fleet. And then Rochambeau said to me, he said, "General Washington, I think we should travel to Yorktown, because we would have Cornwallis surrounded and we could attack." Well, I wanted to get New York. I wanted to attack New York because of all those losses that I had in the beginning of the war. But I listened to Rochambeau, and I said, you know, you're right. You're right, General. I will listen to you, and I think that your idea is excellent. So we went down to, all the way, we marched down to Yorktown. But on the way, we stopped in Morrisville, Pennsylvania, which was not Morrisville at the time. And we spent three days in that section, right near where Summer Seat is today. And we rested, and then we went and traveled all the way down to Yorktown. Morrisville, Pennsylvania, if we get this plaque, it will put us on the map of being an excellent community, something that we all should be very proud of, because it is an excellent community. And we will always fight to keep it perfect. Everyone in this room loves the country that we are in. We also love this town. This town has been great for such a long time. Summer Seat was built in 1765, and I hope it will remain for another 250 years. But let me tell you what happened when we went down to Yorktown. We had the British surrounded. Cornwallis didn't know what to do. We had the French fleet in the Chesapeake, and then myself and Rochambeau and my men had them surrounded on land. And we attacked. It was the siege of Yorktown, and we attacked for two and a half weeks. Finally, Cornwallis surrendered. And after he surrendered, he was supposed to give me that sword of surrender, but he did not want to give it to me. And he gave it to a subordinate. But I would not accept the sword of surrender from the subordinate. And finally, I sent one of my generals to accept that sword. And after we obtained that sword, we had a ceremonial dinner, which was very nice of Cornwallis. Cornwallis was an excellent general, someone that I respected immensely. And we had a table that was very long, I, as I recall, at that time. And there was so much food on that table. Myself and my officers were with me, and I was at one end of the table and Cornwallis was at the other. And I made a toast to Cornwallis, which was customary at the time, to respect the person who lost the war. I gave this very, very, very respectful toast, and then I sat down. And then it was Cornwallis's turn to toast me, and he stood up high and he raised his glass, but he didn't say anything. And we all wondered what he was going to say. Finally, he said these words. "When the illustrious part of your excellency is born on the long and arduous contest, because of matter of history, fame will gather your British laurels from the banks of the Delaware rather than that of the Chesapeake." So what does that mean? Cornwallis knew that from the banks of the Delaware, right here where we live, was the turning point of the American Revolution. It was a great time. It was a horrible time, but it was also great, because we were victorious at the Battle of Trenton, the Second Battle of Trenton, and the Battle of Princeton. Those 10 days, from December 25th to January 3rd, we call it the 10 Crucial Days. And those days will live in our history forever. But that plaque that we're trying to obtain, and our great mayor, he put a GoFundMe up on Facebook. And so far, we're doing well. But we're not at the 4,500 mark yet that we need to buy that, that beautiful plaque. It is beautiful. And it represents our country. It represents not only the war that we won, but the battle which we won that made us free from the grips of the British. I want to thank you for listening to what I'm saying. So if any of you could contribute just a small amount of money for this plaque that represents, and it puts us on the map of the Washington Rochambeau Trail of History, it's very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Do you, do you know the name of the GoFundMe?
Do I know the name of it?
The GoFundMe, what it's called?
I do not know. I do not know.
Is it Morrisville Summer Seat?
But does anyone have any questions? And I'm sorry for my voice. I'm losing it for some reason.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that history. It was most informative. I was just wondering, next year is 250 years. Does Summer Seat have anything planned special out of the ordinary?
So much time has passed.
We actually, we actually have six more years to celebrate this, because this won't be 250 years old until 2031. So we do have a little time.
Well, we do have time. It's, it's the actual celebration of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And that, at that time, I was not in Philadelphia when that, when those men signed and put their name on that document. I was in Cambridge. But the 250th anniversary of our country is very, very important, because we, we were disgusted, as you know. We were disgusted with what we were putting up with, all the taxes and the stranglehold that the British were putting on us. Before that happened, in 1774, there was a, there was a precursor to the Declaration of Independence, and it was called the Fairfax Resolves. Myself and George Mason in Virginia, we wrote these resolves, but the British did not listen. So this is what brought on the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 1776. Any other questions?
Gary, do you have the GoFundMe?
Yep. So the GoFundMe is on my Facebook page, Gary E. Wallace. It's on my Instagram page also, Gary E. Wallace. It is "Help Morrisville Honor Our Revolutionary Legacy." I'm going to skip to that right now, if you don't mind. I did have it in my mayor report. But in such a short time, I want to thank the community, everyone, for, you know, whatever you can contribute to this. So far, we've raised $1,400. So, great job. Thank you all for sharing it and your support. So let's keep it going. Let's keep the momentum going. But yes, the plaque is super important. It's going to put Morrisville on the map. But there's so much more that you get with this leadership program and the $4,500. So it also install official victory town signage, receive custom history letter by renowned historian Dr. Robert Slig, provide educational material to local students, host special events, speakers and reenactors, place a permanent victory town marker, that's what General was talking about, right here in town. So as we have the 250th coming up, this will bring visitors into Morrisville. So we'll have more people out there coming into Morrisville to see our beautiful town and what it has to offer. I know, we talked about some events that we could do over there as well at Summer Seat for the 250th, and we're excited to see what we can do to continue to bring people here in Morrisville. So thank you again to everyone who has donated, and keep on sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so board openings, please email letters of interest to office@morrissvilleborough.org. We have a position in the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC, and at the library board. We also had the children's librarian at the, at the Morrisville Free Library resign, so we will be looking to fill that, or we may combine the librarian position with the children's librarian. So there's a lot of changes coming for the library from the Bucks County system. And within the next two years, they're going to have different requirements, and we will be working with them to make sure that our new librarian has all the qualifications that is needed for them. So council discussion. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. I noticed at our last council meeting in May that we had voted to have the music festival on June 28th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. However, Catherine, I've been noticing you've been posting flyers that say the festival is really from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m.? I know. I, I mean, but you need to ask council's permission to do that. So in the future, could you just, just, because there should have been an agenda item saying 1:00 to 8:00, not 4:00 to 8:00?
Okay.
That will have to be on the next month's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, could you work with Lorraine in the office? Okay, thank you. The other thing that I noticed is that some of the ads out there are not listing Morrisville Borough as the sponsor, and all the items on the agenda said that the Borough would be a sponsor. So could you make sure all the flyers say sponsored by Morrisville Borough? Movie Night does not.
It doesn't?
No.
Okay, I will change that.
Okay. Well, it would be two things. It would be Morrisville Borough and then Parks and Rec is a separate entity.
Okay, I will try to change that.
Okay, thank you.
You said you wanted a banner. Is there a banner?
We don't have a banner, but I was going to talk to Mr. Dillon that perhaps we could buy a small one, and it would just be used by any event sponsored, and it would just become part of the process. But at this point, we don't have one.
Okay, so if we don't have one, I'll make sure that there's some signage up.
That would be great. Yeah.
Okay.
So the other, one last item is that the movie festival, it was, it was, it was stated that there would be no cost to the Borough. And then what it was, how my understanding is, is that the library was going to go for the movie license. But they were going for the movie license based on the fact that the Parks and Rec would be paying for the movie license?
We do have fundraising to do it for the next movie, but we did not have all the money raised this time. And so we have sponsors, we have the Y, the S, for this time, and the presentation with the check.
Correct.
And then we'll present you with the check.
Okay. Okay, fantastic. Okay, no, that's just housekeeping events. So making sure that what council voted for is what is occurring. Okay. Gilmore and Associates, South Pennsylvania Avenue Traffic Calming Study. And also, I was down at the Senior Center yesterday, actually this morning, and the Manor Park Playground looks great.
I was going to say, I'm going to start with some project updates first, and then I'll go to the traffic study presentation. So you just stole my thunder there on Manor Park. That was my first one here.
Well, you know, it's dear to my heart.
I know it is. So, yeah, so the mulch was installed last week. They're finishing up some of that this week. That additional stormpipe work, that was a change order approved last month. They are finally starting that. Again, the weather has been an issue on this project as well, holding us up from digging and excavating. So that work is still continuing. It's about another week or so out. So I'd say by the end of next week, they should be close to cleaning up. And by the first week of July there, July 4th week, have a final walkthrough and make sure the site's all cleaned up around that week. And then we can maybe put together ribbon-cutting grand opening for the kids.
That would be great. They're all out of school now.
Yes. So they'll be looking for something. I think right now, the equipment is caution taped off, so don't play on it until it's opened up.
Probably biting at the bit.
I'm sure. They're probably ripping half the tape off right now.
Right?
The next item I had to give an update on is the Manor Park Senior Center Parking Lot Project. I know it was mentioned last month that the county had awarded some grant funds for it. It is confirmed now that there are three sources from the county's money that we paying for the, that they are awarding to the Borough. Yeah, so, three projects, yeah, three, three funding sources for that. So then the next step is then, so that of those three sources, and- So then the next step is then, so that of those three sources, engineering is still not covered, again, because it is a CDBG grant, and then the other money that the county found and allocated were some of their previous grant funds that they had for their own Senior Center project, the Stormwater Improvement Project, which they now allocated towards this one, and then another, another funding source that they had available. So nothing will cover engineering, so that will be on the borough. So next month, I believe, we'll put together a proposal for you to consider, so we can move forward with the design.
When do you think the parking lot will be completed?
Gonna try to move as fast as we can. There's the one part that's still, we still would like to collaborate on with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority, as they own that cloverleaf site, they don't, well, they have, they're working on that cloverleaf site, and as part of that, they had to do environmental remediation, and we are gonna try to tag on to their work to do our geotechnical investigation to make sure that we are repairing the parking lot, so it won't happen again with these settlement issues. So we're still working through that coordination, that's gonna be the biggest part, but after we get through that, we should be able to put some plans together and get it out to bid here this year still.
This year, well, you're thinking?
Yeah.
The Senior Center will be really thrilled.
I know they will be.
I know.
It's probably gonna be a little bit more than that, typically we go off 10%, but with the additional geotech investigation that's gonna go around, probably up to about $90,000 for that. So again, we'll prepare a proposal, a full proposal, come to a number, and then we can present that to council for their consideration. So, okay. Next project I have, and I'm gonna ask the chief for some help on this one, is the Borough's Police Sally Port, that'll be installed here at the Borough Hall, I'll let him explain exactly what it is, but we are putting that project out to bid here on tomorrow, it starts, and bids will be due July 8th, and it'll be on your next council agenda for consideration. I mean, if you wanna come explain what the Sally Port is and its uses.
Thanks, Jacob. So the Sally Port is a secure enclosure that is in place for when we bring prisoners into the police department, or take prisoners out of the police department. Typically, they're enclosed on at least four sides, some of them have roofs, some of them are constructed with fence, some are block, but the purpose is to drive into the Sally Port when you're bringing a prisoner in, get out, close the door behind you, this way, when you open the door to remove the prisoner, there's no chance of escape and injury to officer, prisoner, or anyone else. Conversely, when leaving the police department, we would bring the prisoner out of the building, into the Sally Port, secure them in the car, and then we can get in the car and drive out. It is required for the, for us to become a central booking center, and that's, it's good practice, it enhances safety for the community and the officers, but in our case, it is required for the booking center, so we're excited to see the plans and see in motion.
Thank you.
So just with that Sally Port finished, there will never, ever be another, a prisoner, when I say prisoner, someone under arrest, whatever, going through the process in our hallway or out in our parking lot. So even if you arrested someone, and there was an angry family member that didn't like the arrest, they can't even interfere with your police work.
So once they're in a Sally Port, yeah, we're insulated from everything outside.
Awesome.
Yes.
All right, thank you, chief. And then the final project I have an update on quick is the levee, and unfortunately, Melissa's not here to hear it, but there was one minor comment that the FEMA came back with, and it is again on your agenda tonight, to update that emergency action plan, they requested that we include coordination and communication with DCNR related to the canal and the waste gate overflow for that. So with that, and this readoption, we will re-cement, and this, per the email, this was the last outstanding comment to get the accreditation of the levee. So we should see that coming through here soon. Another one's been a long one, too. I think that's everything I mostly spoke about, and there's a couple items on your agenda, and part of them are related to my presentation I'm gonna do next, I'm gonna set up that computer, and then I'll be right back.
As we wait for Jacob, solicitor report?
Yeah, just have one item, just prior to tonight's meeting, council met an executive session where matters of police personnel and a litigation matter were discussed.
Okay, again, I have the chief helping me out again here, is my sidekick. So a couple months ago, you had authorized Gilmore and Associates to conduct a traffic study along South Pennsylvania Avenue to determine some improvements for traffic calming. And so this study took place in, when was it, March of 2025, and it was to, it conducted a study between the US off-ramps on South Pennsylvania, down to the borough limits on East Post Road, or Post Road, it's approximately 3,500 feet, and this was in result of some couple changes that had happened, one of those being PennDOT in the borough recently changing the speed limit to 25 miles per hour, and then the more recent event, the truck ban, for the 10-ton truck ban on the project, which we waited till after that had taken into effect a couple months, and we did notice, and some of the counts reflect, there is a significant decrease in large truck traffic down South Pennsylvania Avenue now. Go ahead, chief. So the purpose of the study was to respond to some community concerns, again, it was expressed to us, there were some concerns for speeding and pedestrian safety along this area and corridor of South Pennsylvania Avenue. As part of that then, is doing, collecting the data, we would then process all that to identify appropriate traffic calming measures that are in line with PennDOT standards and the Federal Highway Administration best practices. And these all are to help enhance, again, enhance pedestrian safety, quality of life for the residents that live in that area, and address some speeding. All right, so some of the existing characteristics of South Pennsylvania Avenue are very wide travel lanes, so there's eleven, two, you have two 11-and-a-half-foot travel lanes with eight-foot shoulders on each side, which most residents park on and use it as parking. So you're averaging out at least a 38-to-40-foot wide travel lane, which, if you look straight down the street, it looks like a big runway for speeding cars and, you know, airplanes. Other aspects of that, again, of the existing street are on-street parking, again, for residential. There are only one signalized intersection on this stretch, and that's at Philadelphia Avenue, all the other intersections are just stop-controlled. There are existing sidewalks and areas, and some sides that don't have areas, and then there are only currently two identified crosswalk areas in this area, one at Philadelphia Avenue with the traffic signal, and then the next crosswalk is at Cleveland Avenue. And then another characteristic of the road is some minimal, minimal lighting for that. So again, we took, we did, we took data collections on three points on South Pennsylvania Avenue, one at just south of Green Street, one centrally located around the cemetery, and then one just at north of Post Road. So we set up equipment there for six days each, at each sec, each section, to determine traffic counts and speed. So of that, I have some information up on the slide there, so the 85th percentile speeds, which 85, 85th percentile is 85% of the drivers were going the speed average. So for the area around Green Street, we calculated an average speed of 23 miles per hour, which reflects, again, there's traffic signals up there in that area, that's where the off-ramps are, trucks driving through that section still, so traffic's still slow up through there. And then when you get down to the cemetery, speeds increased up to 29, averaged 29 miles per hour, again, as it started to open up, and as you got to Post Road, 32 miles per hour. And one of the key factors of implementing traffic calming measures is you have to meet the 85th percentile speed limit by more than 5 to 10 miles per hour. So because Post Road, data collected in there averaged 32 miles per hour, we're 7 miles per hour over, so the borough is in a position to implement traffic calming measures in this section of the, of South Pennsylvania Avenue. Again, one of the other data collections that the equipment collected was traffic counts. So on the screen there, their Green Street count counted about 5,116 vehicles average per day, and that's in both directions. Cemetery section was about 4,954 vehicles, and Post Road, 3,596 vehicles. Quick little tidbit that would show, reflects that the traffic, the truck traffic has decreased is PennDOT had an average daily traffic for the area around Green Street of 11,000 vehicles, and then near Bowling Green Avenue was where their data was collected, was about 6,500 vehicles. So we have significantly cut that down, which can only assume that it's the truck traffic that has been cut. So then again, so of the traffic calming, PennDOT has a whole booklet of it, and what you can and cannot use for traffic calming, so these are some of the general ones that PennDOT approves. So number one would be speed humps, speed bumps, their vertical raised bump in the asphalt to slow traffic down by, to 15 to 20 miles per hour. Some of the pros of those are reduced speeds easily, and relatively low cost. However, some of the concerns related to speed humps are that if we put these in, traffic will divert through these side streets, skip the speed bump, and come back up, so you'd have more traffic going down Ida, Lenora, those kind of streets like that. Other things is emergency response vehicle clearance, making sure that emergency vehicles can still make it over the bumps, and then another big one that we look at as engineers is stormwater runoff drainage, and making sure that there's no ponding and puddles that form after you install these. So we typically stay away from recommending those be installed when we have these kind of conditions with, again, multiple side street entrances. Yeah, go ahead, Catherine. Yeah, box trucks and everything, yeah, that's still allowed to travel. Yep, you'll still hear those, yeah, so again, we typically don't recommend those for these couple reasons. One of the other ones that PennDOT heavily recommends is raised crosswalks. This is different than a speed bump, because it allows for a larger flat top area, again, you need to have a six-foot wide crosswalk for pedestrian crossing areas, so the, it's a more gradual speed hump, but again, it does a similar thing of slowing cars down for that purpose. One of the areas that we do consider, or would recommend, would be looking at this for, is the Cleveland Avenue crosswalk, because it already is a designated crosswalk area. So that is part of the concept plan, is to have that as a raised area. Number, the third one that they have there is chicanes, or curb extensions, like bumpouts. So that's, actually, the picture up on the screen is where you decrease the travel lane width to shorten the pedestrian crossing area, so their pedestrians are not out in the street long enough, and also more visible to oncoming, on traffic going back and forth. Since there are parked cars along South Pennsylvania, if you're stuck behind parked cars, the travelers can't see you, so this gets you out into that area of more visibility for sight. And a majority of our concept plans that we're proposing are to put these bumpouts in at, I believe, post, we have them at Philadelphia Avenue, Cleveland Avenue in association with that speed, with the raised crosswalk, and then also at Bowling Green Avenue. Another item that PennDOT is, recommends is gateways, which is a little, not to be confused with a gateway sign, it will, it can include a gateway sign, but it is a raised median that is essentially down the center on the yellow striped of the lane to help identify that this is the entrance to the borough, this is the entrance to an area. So again, it provides a physical entrance to an area with high pedestrian activity to reduce those speeds.
Similar to when you come over the Trenton Migs Bridge, that center island.
Yes, yep. Can also act, in some cases, as pedestrian refuge island if needed, can even have landscape to enhance appearance, and again, it can include, if desired, a welcome sign to say welcome to Morrisville Borough. And then the final...
And we were, we were thinking about putting that at Post Road, correct?
Correct, yeah, I'll go through the, I have the concept plans here at the end to show you all what we've proposed for you. And then the last one that PennDOT is big on now is including bike facilities, and most of the preferred route is to have a single designated lane for bike travel, however, given the width of South Pennsylvania Avenue, it doesn't really accommodate that, so there are options such as sharrows, which is the, also up on the slide, is a bike with a couple arrows to designate that this is, to be shared, traveling with vehicles and bicycles. There's also some additional traffic signage that comes along with that. And again, that's, that's a big item that PennDOT is pushing to have installed in any traffic improvement project these days. Go ahead, chief. So then I have up on the slides, some of the recommendations, and again, these will go with the concept plans, which I didn't even put up my boards. So again, at Philadelphia Avenue, we are proposing some curb extensions with ADA curb ramps on the south side, the north side of Philadelphia and Pennsylvania, because not the designated truck route, but is the truck route if trucks do come down Pennsylvania, they are to turn onto West Philadelphia and go out to Tyburn Road, that route. If we were to do bumpouts there, the truck radius, turn radius would be reduced, and they wouldn't be able to make that turn without running into the other travel lane. And then other improvements at that would also be traffic signal upgrades, to include hand, pedestrian countdowns, hand, hand signal, stop signals for pedestrians. And then, so then moving down Cleveland Avenue, again, we'd be proposing the curb extensions with ADA curb ramps, advanced pedestrian warning signs with rapid flashing beacon. And again, it would be that raised pedestrian crosswalk to help act as, almost essentially as a speed bump. At Bowling Green Avenue, we are proposing just the curb extension, so this would just narrow the, narrow the street width, we'd still maintain as much of the parking as we can, but again, it narrows down the travel lane, makes drivers more aware of their surroundings as they're looking, coming into a more narrow area. And then at Post Road, we currently have two options in the concept plans, the first one being curb extensions with ADA ramps, and then the second option, again, is this gateway median, which again, can add more, act more as a gateway entrance to the town and the borough, and put landscaping, again, a welcome sign, stuff like that. And then along the entire length of this for South Pennsylvania Avenue, would be some additional traffic signage, again, for those bike traffic, pedestrian traffic, speed, speed limits, and then again, the bicycle facility, line striping, and other line striping, I know that there's some existing 25 mile per hour stripe out there now, maybe adding some additional slow, speed ahead, kind of warning stuff for these upcoming crossings that we'd propose. So as part of that, with all these concept plans, obviously becomes funding, and there are multiple grants that are out there for these kind of projects, one that's currently out there right now, and I'm, have on your agenda to consider us to move forward with providing the grant application, is for the DCD, Department of Community and Economic Development Multimodal Transportation Fund, and that one's due July 31st. Another one is the PennDOT Multimodal Transportation Fund, and that's typically due in November. And then there is also the DCD Local Share Account Grant, which is also due in November, all of these would be applicable for this project. So again, tonight I have on there for your consideration to apply for the DCD one that's currently open, and we would have a, I provided some preliminary cost estimates in the study for these proposed improvements on our concept plans, but part of that is not included right now, is the traffic signal upgrades at Philadelphia, so the grant application would include that. So the grant application would include that improvement as well. And then I have just the rest of the slides, and I can bring up my poster board if I need to, is the concept plans. So this first one is the, is just an overall summary of the entire length of our study area, again, from just above Philadelphia Avenue down to Post Road and points out the various areas you can see on there, the sharrows that we are proposing down along both sides, both travel lanes. And again, some warning signage and stuff like that. So this is alternate one there, Post Road, and this would be the kind of curb ramp bump outs areas, which would narrow the travel lane. That's one option. Go ahead. And then the second option here is this median, this gateway median, which again is just a concrete island, can be landscaped, can have a sign in it, but gives it more of an entrance view for coming into the borough.
Does anyone on council have an opinion if they like alternative one or alternative We don't have to stick with it, but just kind of to give the engineer somewhere to go.
I was gonna say, we don't have to make a decision now. We'll put in the grant application, the more costly one. And then as we get through the project and get into more of the design, we can narrow down and make a final decision later if needed.
I like alternative two.
As do I.
It's a nice, you know, with the sign saying, "Welcome to Morrisville Borough."
Yep.
It'll be nice.
Yes. All right. This next one then is at Philadelphia Avenue. And again, that's showing those bump outs there on the southern end of the intersection crosswalk areas for pedestrians. The next one is at Cleveland Avenue here, the concept plan. And again, it would be putting bump outs on both the north and south ends of Cleveland intersection. And again, this is also where Cleveland Avenue takes you back to the park and the riverfront and the dog park that's back there. So this is a heavily trafficked area that we did notice during our study. And then I believe this is the last one, it's Bowling Green Avenue. Again, just doing bump outs, not with crosswalks, again, because there's no designated crosswalk there right now, and we don't recommend putting in mid-block crossings without stop controls or if they're already there. So that's all I have for that. I mean, if there's any other questions, comments, I can answer those now.
Counsel, any questions for Jacob?
I do. Especially if I have to bump out some across block areas because our kids are not bus, they have to walk. And so I think that would be safer. Cleveland is across from the park, but it's also the senior center. There's a lot of people that walk.
Yep.
So Jacob, I love this concept. I love every bit of it. So my question is, how quickly can you turn this around for North Pennsylvania Avenue?
Stay away from South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Well, I mean, I know a lot of people that would love this on the other side as well, so I'd, you know, I'll give you some time.
We can definitely look into that. We can put together another proposal for that. I know right now we're gonna do the...
Philadelphia Avenue.
Yeah, West Philadelphia Avenue next currently. This was one of the sections I know that counsel and I believe some of the staff had met with Santa Sero's office during the Pendott walkthrough, maybe two years ago, last year. And this was identified by Pendott as being one of the areas that they would strongly encourage, recommend and support these traffic improvements, calming improvements on. So having this study to apply for grants shows that we've already done the legwork for it, so it should be a pretty good project to apply for.
I know, so I heard you, Dennis. So I know that Bridge Street is also a problem, West Bridge Street. So does council have a problem? I mean, we'll vote on it, I'm just looking for a consensus, that after Philadelphia Avenue is done, then we do one for North Pennsylvania and then one for West Bridge Street?
Yeah.
It would be the same thing. It would be a study to see how we could calm traffic a little bit. So, right, Jacob, like for Pennsylvania, you would figure out where to do bump outs or what would be needed?
Yeah, it'd be very similar to this. I mean, only consideration that might change is the number of locations that we do, put equipment on to do studies for and consider if it is a longer stretch of road, however far we go. So that might play into it. But again, we can provide proposals for that as well for your consideration if that's how you'd like to proceed with that.
Okay, perfect. I'll put that on future agenda.
Okay.
All right, nothing else for Jacob? Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Yep. I think that's all I have for you tonight, so if there's no other questions, I'm gonna go sit back down.
Okay, consent agenda. Oh, yeah, consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, police chief. You've already spoke, so I thought you were done. Go ahead, get up there. I know. We'll have to think of something else to bring you up a third time.
Now, I was gonna say, that was twice that you skipped me.
Oh, that's right, next last month.
Yeah, I'm starting to get a conflict, exactly. I'm back, I'm back. Just a couple of really quick announcements. We're gearing up for our National Aid Out this year. For anybody who doesn't know what National Aid Out is, it's exactly what it sounds. It's a national event that occurs across the country with different police departments and communities, where police departments and communities come together. And we had it last year, it was in August. It's August 5th this year, it's always the first Tuesday in August, it's from 5:00 to 8:00, weather permitting. But it's a night where we have our community come out and we invite a lot of our local businesses, and it's a chance to interact with the police in a positive setting and just come together as a community and kind of give an opportunity for the community to interact with us, talk to us as, you know, just the humans that we are and just have a good time. So we're planning that, the mayor's helping out. We have a couple people in the office, we're trying to get more people, make it bigger than last year, and I think it's gonna be a good event. So April, I'm sorry, August 5th, 5:00 to 8:00 PM, right out here. In mind with the towing, we've been getting a couple of complaints about the signage. And we've had to tow a couple of cars because they were on the streets of the roadways that have been signed for no parking. So I'm asking, please, to the residents, please look out for these signs. We know, I think you mentioned tonight that there is a map and a key of what streets are coming next. I was hoping maybe we could talk, Jacob, and maybe modify our approach to removing these cars if it's a problem that is persist. But I think that with just a little bit of outreach and just awareness, our community will know that, you know, when those signs are out there, that means the milling machines are coming and not to park there. Last thing we want to do is remove a car with a tow truck because it comes at an expense to the vehicle owner, and it's certainly not something that, you know, we want to occupy our time with. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I think this is kind of long overdue, is I just wanted to acknowledge the leadership and supervision of Corporal Hallis and Sergeant Aspremonte. More so lately, these two guys have completely stepped up and helped me in more ways than I could imagine. But also, right now, we've been dealing with a little bit of staffing issue. It's vacation season, we had an officer who was out for a wedding, we had one who had a baby, and there was another one who had a wedding. So we're in that time where we're filling shifts, and these guys are making sure that's happening. They're stepping in and filling them themselves. They're keeping the motivation and morale up in the police department, so I appreciate them. I think they're doing a fantastic job, and if you see them, it'll be great if you just give them a "that-a-boy." And then the last thing I wanted to mention, and Council President, I thank you for bringing it up. I think it's important that we just take a moment to remember and honor the career of Officer Rosario Ross DeLassio. I never had the pleasure to meet him, but I've spoken to and I've read a lot of comments, and it seems that he is representative of the Morrisville Borough Police Department. Some of the things that he's been described as is gentle, polite, a professional, somebody who people really liked. And I think you mentioned it yourself, 43 years. That's not a career. That's two careers, you know? And I know that some of that was part-time and there may have been a hiatus in there, but that guy wore the uniform for almost two careers. In New York City, that's more than two careers. You know, Morrisville is a great little borough, it's unique, I say, for, you know, us in terms of policing. So the fact that he did that so long, he has my ultimate respect. The guy did patrol, he was an investigator for some time, and he did truck enforcement. So he was really all over the police department. And I think that, you know, based on what I've heard over the last week and the comments that I've read, he's certainly left a positive mark in the police department. So I'd like to, you know, thank him for, you know, his work here, his time, and offer again my condolences to his family, to anybody in the community that knew him. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
My pleasure.
Consent agenda, we... Oh, I'm sorry, I keep missing everybody. Borough manager.
Just, Jacob, you'll have for council for next month's agenda, a proposal to implement the senior center parking lot improvements. I just want to make sure. If you look at the engineer's report on page two, item four, as when they printed this, the only money that we really had in our pocket was the $415,000 from CDBG funds. But late yesterday, the chief executive officer of the county and thus the county commissioners came up with the extra funding. So it was only as of yesterday that we were able to get that whole 700 and some thousand estimate for that project. So now we just need to proceed with the engineering. So if we can get that proposal to council so they can consider it next month. You know, the other thing, the, we've completed through the help of Virginia and Dawn, we've gotten the funding in place for the road program. We've got the sign-offs from the state and the banks and everybody else. And again, through the funding mechanism, it's being helped by the county commissioners also, Bob Harvey. So right now, our interest rate variable is at 3.5%. 3.5%. It's not at 15% or anything near that. So I think we're in a good position.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Yeah, I mean, I think I'm sure, I don't know. Did I miss something else? There is no meeting minutes to approve this month, so they'll be on next month's agenda. So the consent is approval of the bill list from 5/1 to 5/31/25 in the amount of $520,258.27. Approval of closing Dieter Avenue from noon until 8:00 PM on Saturday, August 23rd, 2025, for a birthday party. Approval for the borough to co-sponsor two pool party events held at the Morrisville Dog Park from 12:00 to 3:00 PM on Sunday, July 20th, 2025, with the rain date July 27th, and Sunday, September 21st, 2025, rain date of September 28th. This is no cost to the borough. Call for resolution for amendment of Morrisville Borough's Act 537 Plan for additional sewer facilities at 351 West Philadelphia Avenue. And that is the property that is right past Wright Avenue, and it straddles Falls Township and Morrisville. So Luke, could you make the motion?
Still moved.
Marie, would you second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Commentary from the public? Jacob?
For that Act 537 Plan, I believe the applicant's here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, Gene, welcome.
Yeah, so if you have any questions on that, it is just to add EDUs to the site or to the Morrisville's Act 537 Plan that the borough holds with the MMA. They worked jointly together on this. It's just to provide additional sewer capacity to this property. So if there's any questions on the project, they are here to answer those if we need them.
Counsel?
It's just a general.
No. Oh, you're welcome. Okay, anything else from the public? Nothing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. You're good to go, sir.
Okay, one thing I'd like to say.
Oh, sure, come on up.
We're gonna donate...
Just step, just step up to the mic.
Yeah, we're gonna donate $3,000 to George Washington. And also, the facility we're putting there will donate about $250,000 a year to the borough of Morrisville.
Oh, my God. $250,000?
For the MMA, they will receive probably a million dollars a year.
Wow.
Win, win, whatever.
Wow, we should have had you up earlier.
Yeah, that's okay. You know, I charge by the hour.
Okay. I didn't know that. You know, if you were closer, I'd give you a big kiss.
I live in Morrisville, so that's good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That is so generous, thank you, we appreciate it.
Oh, my God, so just in case...
Do you have my business card? Could you send me that email address?
Of course, here, leave it with me. I'll share it with the mayor.
I'm gonna go take care of this one.
Okay, great, thanks so much. So just so everyone heard, they're going to give $3,000 to Summer Seat in order for the, to get the plaque that they need and $250,000 to the borough? So thank you so much.
I didn't want to say anything before the vote.
I get that. I get that. A million.
Come to the meetings anytime.
Yeah, you're more as well come here. Oh, my God, I'm a little overclumped.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for doing that, Jacob. Okay, so last month, we started something where the council members would read the agenda item by starting saying, "I make the motion," and they would read one, and then someone else would, I would call someone and they would second it. Do you want to continue that process?
Yes.
Okay. Scott, 11A.
I make the motion.
Pull it up.
Yeah, say, "I make the motion," and I'm ready.
Yeah, I make the motion for the borough engineers for a proposal for a feasibility study regarding construction of a municipal parking garage within the borough as well as an analysis of potential locations, estimated costs, and grants available for such a project.
Catherine, would you make the second? Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Anything from the public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Luke?
Action item B, call for a motion to authorize Gilmore and Associates Incorporated to parent submit a grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development, CD, DCED Multimodal Transportation Fund for the traffic calming improvements identified in the Gilmore Associates South Pennsylvania Ave Traffic Calming Study.
Andrew, would you second?
I'd second Luke's motion.
First and a second. Any discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Dennis, 11C.
I motion to authorize Gilmore and Associates, Inc. to prepare and submit a grant application through the Department of Community and Economic Development Multimodal Transportation Fund for the replacement of the traffic signal at North Pennsylvania Ave and Trenton Ave.
Marie, would you second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Public? Come on up. Come on up.
Jane Berger with Maple Avenue. It was mentioned during Gilmore's presentation, there was a lot to absorb, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but I'm just wondering what this is about. I mean, if it's a good thing, you certainly want to do it, but this is probably the third time now we've had to redo that traffic signalization. I know they've added coming into Morrisville, Trenton, a left turn, right, it just, just some clarification of how this is gonna make this a better traffic signal.
Well, there was, Jacob, you could probably explain it better, but there were some issues. We got the grant and... We got the grant and then...
Yeah, so this traffic signal at North Pennsylvania and Trenton Avenue, we were, the borough received funding for it in 2019 and 2021. And it's only partial funding. It was around $344,000 in the cost estimate to completely upgrade that signal, make it more modernized to today's standards and meet all the Penn Doc codes, is around $600 some thousand. So we're trying to go for the gap funding to close that gap and officially replace the signal. So that's what this next grant application will be for.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Okay, we already voted on 11D. Andrew, would you make the motion for 11E?
Yes. I move to approve payment for the purchase of the playground equipment for the Manor Park Playground Project, amount of $147,719.50 to General Recreation, Inc., through Co-Stars.
Scott?
Still moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any comment, discussions? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Catherine, 11F? Dennis?
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Luke, 11G?
Offer a motion to reimburse co-responder fuel expenses equally with LMT and Yardley Borough, one-third, not to exceed $300 per calendar year, $150 for the remainder of 2025.
Second, Dennis?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Marie, 11H?
Yes. A call for a motion to repeal the older version of and adopt the amended emergency action plan for the Morrisville flood protection levy.
Luke, second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Okay, public comment. Peggy Walsh.
Good evening. Peggy Walsh, Dr. Mavenu. I was confused while watching your May council meeting. A speaker from Imagine Morrisville talked about the need to bring the arts to Morrisville as part of our revitalization effort. I absolutely agree that arts benefit the community on many levels, including supporting our businesses. But I was surprised that the speaker did not mention any of the arts that are already a part of Morrisville. We do have a very successful theater, the Actors Net, which has been operating for several years. Granted, the space is small and we should try to find a bigger venue for its performances, but we should at least acknowledge its existence and success. We have a number of murals throughout towns. I encourage everyone to go see the windows the Morrisville students did on the Capitol View School Building. They just completed Phase Two of a three-year project. With the generous donations of time and paint and talent, a community project resulted in a mural covering the former snack shack at the island and the underpass by the dog park. In all three projects, local artists and the community came together to create public art. We have a group of generous and talented artists who could be enlisted to help extend these murals to amplify our Birdtown status, our sports history, and summer seat. At one point, the speaker said they would not touch the park. Why not? We have a stage. Our events at the park allow local artists to display their wares and perform music. But there's little support from this council for events at the park. In fact, every time the current chair of Parks and Rec Committee tries to get approval and some support for the events, the council quibbles endlessly. It was painful to watch council spend 20 minutes scrutinizing an expenditure of $450 to help fund a music festival in the park and a $1,500 request for the very successful Irish festival that brings music, dancing, craft vendors, and most importantly, our young families into our park, even though that council, I think, budgeted $7,000 this year to support park events. I hope the $50,000 grant obtained to study bringing arts to Morrisville will work on what we have in our unique town already. And I hope council will recognize that I think our park is a perfect showcase for all of these arts. Thank you.
Jim Gaskin? Thank you, Peggy. Jim? Jim's not here. Gary Taylor?
Good evening, Gary Taylor, 405 Hamilton. This last, two Fridays ago, I submitted a UNO, as we do for all of our properties, to Lorraine for someone to move into a property. We didn't hear from Larry for a couple of days, which is unusual. So we called on Wednesday. So we did a Friday, called on Wednesday, and he had no knowledge of the UNO. We asked if she called Lorraine, but he said, "No, Jenna's now taking care of that." I think it's Jenna down there. So we called her. She said, "No, I'm not doing it. We passed that on to Courtney for the, that's doing all the reinspection things." So we called her. She didn't know anything about it. So she said, "We'll call you back later." She called us back later on Wednesday and said, "Well, I guess you found something on it." And said, "Well, because of all the reinspections they're doing for those old rentals, we can't get to you till next Monday." So yesterday was the first day that they could put schedules for us. Now we're 10 days after a UNO. Didn't used to be that way. And so we finally got the UNO, but these people probably aren't going to be able to move in till the next weekend, which is 15 days afterward, simply because they're working. And so we were trying to get in one for the weekend. So this kind of thing, postponement, really hurts the tenant. You know that we're business people. For us, means $55 a day in lost rent. But for the tenant, it means they're sleeping on the couch or they were in a hotel, now they're on the couch with a friend and a relative, waiting for this UNO to get passed. So it's really got them broken since we've started all these rental things and really delayed the process. I had another person who we put in another place, got a UNO for her. She moved in. And I called Jamie or texted Jamie after she signed the lease. And I said, "How the lease, how the lease signing go?" And she texted me back two words. She cried. This is what landlords do. We provide housing for people that are in need, and they really appreciate it. Our motto is quality housing at a fair price. The inspection list we have here, and I've been doing this for hundreds of inspections, the inspection list you have for these rentals, three pages. And then the last column here, kind of makes it really open-ended. Additional items to be corrected may be identified and noted at the time of the inspection. So supposedly, three pages. The UNO's only one page. Two columns. We get it all done, it moves in. Now we have three columns with whatever we happen to find over and above that. I think it's, I think we're putting down our tenants. I don't think the landlord deserved the reputation that we should be getting from most of the borough council members. I don't think the tenants deserve the kind of reputation that they're getting. And the piece that you put out, of course, it said rentals, and it says, "We're looking for combustible storage around the heaters, extension cords plugged into extension cords, trash on stoves, insects, smoke detectors, block degress and pass..." I mean, it makes the tenants sound, the renters, the renters sound like really bad people. And they're not. And they're not any worse than the residents. If you go around residents, you'll find the same thing.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have a, I have a proposal.
I'm sorry, three minutes, three minutes is up.
And help.
Okay. Caesar Haas? I think it's Caesar Haas, Philadelphia Avenue. Okay, he's not here. Jane Berger.
Jane Berger, as you all know now, it's West Maple Avenue. Lot of information tonight. Thank you for counsel. Longtime resident, but I'm here to speak as a very small landlord. I bought my house many years ago in anticipation of retiring. It has an apartment in it that I thought would be good to supplement my income. So I sent in the form, I paid my $100, and I went over the page, three pages, with my tenant, across of those that did not apply, to make sure that we take care of everything and make sure we're in good shape for the inspection. It was last week, and I'm smiling tonight, of course. Everything was fine in the apartment because the tenant has used a part of the garage. That also was inspected, so my fire extinguators and everything are good. Had to go into the basement. Not everybody has painted floors and walls and rugs in their basement, but what do you do when it's COVID in 2020? The water heater was down there, so that had to be inspected, and the electric was shut off for it. And walking through another part of the basement, the inspector did happen to notice a smoke detector and it was kind of old. And so that was the only thing I had to do. I went out to Cunningham's, got the smoke detector, put it up, sent a photograph of that, texted to the inspector, and I am now fully compliant, and I'm going to check all the other smoke detectors. One, they all work, but make sure none of them are approaching 10 years. It was about a half hour. The inspector was certainly very professional and thorough, and, you know, he didn't look at anybody's refrigerator drawers or, you know, anything that, you know, somebody might have been concerned about. And I said, "I worked with my tenant on that, plus to have him." And so it's also a rental at a reasonable price. I haven't raised the rent in seven years, and I don't plan to raise it again because I'm not looking, it's not an income job for me as it is for the landlords. That is their main source of income. But I just want to share a positive experience about the inspection process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Anybody else in the public want to speak? No? Okay. I just want to clear up two things that were said. Imagine Morrisville is their own private organization, and they received funding without the borough's help. And whatever their plans are as a private organization, that is up to them. And additionally, when you're speaking about the budget, there is a budget, but council is the one, it's not an automatic budget that just goes through to be used because the committee wants it. It's up to council's discretion how that money is going to be used. Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Just another additional comment, too, that Tom Wosnowski and his wife Ellen, they are on the boards of the Actors Net and support it 100%. This was just about bringing another part of the arts into the borough, but they are probably the number one supporters over there of the Actors Net, so.
Okay, and I just want to also say that June 18th?
Thursday.
Thursday, June 19th is Juneteenth, and the borough will be closed. I'm not sure about the MMA. Do you know, Virginia? Both are closed. So 19th is a holiday, and no one will be in Borough Hall. Additionally, the tax collector is coming back to the borough, and her tax, her hours are going to start July 7th, and it will be Mondays 11 to 1, Tuesdays 5 to 7, and Fridays 9 to 12. She also has a new phone number, so it's, should I read it or people get, see it on their bill? But just make note, there's a new phone number. I don't want to read it. But so those are the new tax collector hours, and she will not be in her home. She will be at all of those three days here in the borough. Next is the mayor's comments. Mr. Mayor?
All right, good evening. I'd like to first start by congratulating the class of 2025 from Morrisville Senior High School. We wish, we wish all of our graduates the very best as they embark on their next journey in life. It's always inspiring to see our youth take this significant step forward. Congratulations. Also, a special shout out goes to Anna from Grandview Elementary, who completed her entire first grade year with perfect attendance. I had the pleasure presenting her with a certificate of achievement to celebrate this success. Great job, Anna. Keep up the amazing work. Next, a quick update on our weekly mayor run. We paused this past Sunday to give everybody the opportunity to enjoy Father's Day and celebrate all the great dads in our community. Happy belated Father's Day. Our next run will be Sunday, June 29th at 10:00 AM. I will be away this coming weekend attending a family event, but the run will resume, as usual, the following week. Thank you all for your continued participation in the Morrisville Moves. It's been a joy watching it grow. I also want to share that I now have the flag that honored local hero Chief Petty Officer Richard D. Costello, a Morrisville native who gave his life in service to our country. This flag will be respectfully displayed around Patriots Park as a tribute to his sacrifice and remember his bravery and dedication of all those who serve. We are proud to honor his memory in this special way. We are going to keep this going each year in partnership with the Elks, but... Here goes the flag.
Oh, nice.
That will be held, so this will be given to John and his team, and when time permits, they will get this put up over there in Patriots Park, and we'll do a little post about it. So lastly, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Juneteenth, which will observe this Thursday. Juneteenth is a time to reflect on the importance of freedom, resilience, and equality. I encourage everybody to take time to honor this day and celebrate the progress we made and the work we continue to do towards a more just and unified society. Thank you all for your attention. Let's continue working together for the betterment of Morrisville.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, any comments? Anyone want to say anything? Catherine? That's better.
Yay! I'd like to remind you that this Friday will be our first movie in the park. I want to thank the people that Compass and Solid Rock Youth Center for coming up with the, they're doing, they have the screen, and they're also providing the movie, The Invincibles? Invincibles. And it's free. Bring your blanket, your lawn chair, bug spray, and it's for families and anybody who would like to come and enjoy it. Then our next event is our first annual ever Rock and Roll Festival. It's on June 28th, right?
Yes, June 28th.
Yes, thank you. At Williamson Park. We started out with just a couple of bands, and as you can see on the flyer, we've had several more that are joining, and it should be a day of fun. We'll have the yard games out there and bring a community picnic basket or just a basket for yourself and your family, and come out and enjoy a day of music and fun with your family. And I'll have more announcements as more events take place this summer. So thank you. I appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else? Dennis, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Peggy Walsh for having the courage to come out and speak at the council meeting. I'm guessing that this is from the Facebook post, and I hate to go back to this. The full post, while your portion was, was kind, that post was disturbing at best. To say that we grandstand each other and pat each other on the back, we do...
I'm sorry, don't interrupt. I'm sorry, don't interrupt. Don't interrupt, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Peggy, but you've read verbatim from the post. I'm just, again, thank you for having the courage to come to the council meeting and say it directly to us. But again, I mean, we don't need to divide each other, you know, it's... All I'm trying to say is Facebook is dividing Morrisville.
Oh, yes. I'm not on Facebook, that's why.
I'm sorry, Peggy. I'm sorry, this is the council comments. You had your three minutes. Please.
I'm actually not calling you out. I'm thanking you for having the courage. I'm thanking you for having the courage to read.
Peggy, please stop.
I'm not on Facebook.
Ask her to leave.
Okay. So, anyway, maybe maybe this is the case in point.
You can continue, just don't mention her name.
I, I, again, I just, I don't like what I see. It's a great town, we're trying to do great things. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dennis. It is true, Facebook has been posting some really one-sided comments that really do not reflect all the work that this council is putting in and trying to improve the town. So I commend you, Dennis, for for speaking up.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? No one on council? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Anyone?
Still moved.
Second? Second. You want to make a motion? Yeah, you could have said it.